And we will have Judge Juarez come up and swear you three in at the same time.
That's you too, Bob.
Can we just be down here?
Yeah, just down here.
He scared me.
And the laws of the state of Arizona. And I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And defend him against all enemies. Born and domestic. Born and domestic. And faithfully. And impartially. And impartially. Discharge the duties. Of council member for the city of Casa Grande. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God.
Sure. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Of the United States. And the laws of the state of Arizona. And the laws of the state of Arizona. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And defend them against all enemies. And defend them against all enemies. Born and domestic. Born and domestic. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. And impartially discharge. And impartially discharge. The duties of mayor for the city of Casa Grande. The duties of mayor for the city of Casa Grande. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then I'll call to order the newly organized council. Welcome to our newest council member. Bob Huddleston, Mr. Huddleston. And let the roll call show that everyone is present, Gloria.
So noted.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen of the audience, I give you your new city council, at least for the next two years. Okay. Now, I've got a couple presentations that I want to give, and then we'll take a short break after the presentations, because we have some cake for everybody in the back. If I can have Mr. Matt Herman come up.
So it's a tradition that in the city of Casa Grande that we rotate the, or that we actually have one year mayor pro tem position. And I will say that Mr. Herman has served it very well. He's filled in for me on many, many occasions, and Matt, I appreciate that very much. He's done a great job as my wingman as the mayor pro tem. And in appreciation for his work this last year, although he did get a little extra money for it. So, again, mayor pro tem, December 2017 to December of 2018.
Matt, thank you. Now can I have Mr. Varela please come forward?
I don't know, everybody's really said a lot about Ralph. And Ralph has become a mentor to me. I mean, he does embody the servant leader. I know it was said earlier, but I aspire to be that servant leader, and Ralph has already proved that he is that servant leader. So I appreciate your help and your friendship on the council. It's been a pleasure, even though it's only been two years that we've served together on the council. I feel like I've known you for, you know, all the entire time I've lived here in Casa Grande. So in appreciation really for all of your service in the 12 years, June 2003? Holy cow, no, 2008, three, 2003 to, see, I need my glasses. So June 2003 to March 2010, and April 2012 to December 2018. Okay. So in appreciation, I want you to please take this, hang it in a prominent place because you deserve it. And, you know, on behalf of the council and the city staff, thank you for everything you've done for the city of Casa Grande. I know you're not done, but thank you. No, I've said it now, thank you. Thank you for your presence and for all your support overall, and we are truly appreciative, and we'll stay in contact. Thank you.
All right, so we'll take a little break. And we have some cake in the back, so if you'd like to take. And there's somebody back there that's going to cut it?
There is, me.
There goes Gloria.
Okay, where is it? Over here, over there, did you see it back there? Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
All right, that was a little longer than 15 minutes, sorry. All right. So I think the next item on our agenda is item G, which is to consider the election of a mayor pro tem. And we'll entertain the nominations.
I would nominate Donna. By the process we've used over time, it's her turn.
My second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, then actually by acclamation, Donna is the new mayor pro tem. You can move over here next time.
Okay, so we'll stay here for now.
No, we think just, we're going to stay where we're at for now.
Mr. Mayor, we'll just leave the council sitting in the same location tonight, and Gloria will call by the voting order.
And when we come in next time, you'll have the man in the right spot.
Yes, that's correct.
That way then you'll know where you're sitting.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Mayor, I was brought to my attention that some people have better name deals out there than others do.
Yeah, I saw that. Look at Bob's ears.
Oh.
He's got the same notepad that's got somebody else's name on it, though, so. All right. Are there any meeting agenda changes?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the meeting.
So move. Second.
Okay, moved in second, and all those papers signify saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting agenda is approved. Consent agenda items, all consent, or all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second. All right, it's been moved in seconded, Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, item J is our next item on the agenda, which is public comments. So this is the opportunity for anybody in the audience who would like to address the council. I would ask you to state your name and address, and try and keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone like to speak? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor, and we will move to item K, K1, which is Consider Ordinance Number 3108. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction Incorporated for the Rancho Grande pavement reconstruction project in an amount not to exceed $2,970,627, and authorize the finance director to transfer budget authority from the annual pavement preservation program to the Rancho Grande repaving project in an amount of $694,627. Due to uncertainties in the soils conditions that was generated with our geotechnical support of that subdivision, we determined that there were just, there were enough unknown items as we went through the design phase of this, that we wanted to bid this out in phases. And so we gave ourselves a lot of opportunities with the way we bid this out, and we're moving forward with the recommendation this evening. We did do a formal solicitation and received four bids in response to this project, and Sunland Asphalt was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So we did estimate a worst-case scenario. We've got some opportunities with different options as we go through this project, the way we bid that, and we're moving forward with one of the options, which is soil remediation, not remove and replace, but we're actually going to stabilize in place with a soil cement-type product. We were successful in using this product when we did the reconstruction several years back on Casa Grande Avenue between McCartney, or excuse me, McMurray and Cottonwood Lane. We think we'll have the same success in this subdivision. And again, we based everything on a worst-case scenario, so we know we have enough money budgeted. And we're asking to do this project in one phase instead of the phases that we bid it in. That way we're impacting this community once in a shorter period of time, and to get the most bang for our buck. So with that, our pavement preservation program as budgeted is $1.8 million, and 1.5 of that is for pavement maintenance. These are both taken out of the same funds, they're just titled different during the budget process. So all we're asking to do is take that portion, the $694,627, out of our balance for that pavement preservation program, use it in this project, and then we're just going to decrease the amount of pavement maintenance we do as the remainder of our program. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, is this, this is, how do we give residents notice of this?
So it's part of the contractor's contract to go out and notify the community. However, we're going to have message boards out well in advance of each of the steps throughout this project. We are going to be removing and replacing all asphalt. So we are going to impact absolutely every resident in that community. So there's going to be a lot of opportunity for us to communicate with those residents so they know what to expect and for what duration.
That's good, because I, in the end, they'll be happy, but in the interim, they're not going to be happy.
Yeah, and when we do our open house for our pavement preservation program, we're going to advertise this as well, so they'll have an opportunity to come talk to us.
How many streets does this impact?
Every single one in that subdivision.
And they're totally rebuilding them, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's awesome. Matt?
Kevin, thank you. I've been talking to a lot of people out there for waiting for this, so I'm glad we're doing it. And so that everybody knows, in the community, this is part of our pavement management index. We don't just randomly pick roads, correct? We have an actual grading system and budgetary means of doing that, right?
That's correct, and one of the reasons we're moving forward with the recommendation to take some of the funds from our pavement maintenance program, that 1.5 million, we've not programmed that yet. We've been doing the upgrade to our IMS pavement management system, recalibrating that, and we're just finishing that project. So once that's finished, then we'll start to program this year's actual pavement maintenance. So we just need to adjust that based on the balance that we have remaining.
Okay. Yeah.
A question, Kevin, is it part of the contract as well that the contractor maintain access to the houses' vehicle? And how do they accomplish that?
I'm not going to say it's going to be easy, because we are tearing out all of the asphalt, reconditioning or reconstituting the subgrade before we put the new asphalt down. So there are going to be times where we're going to be taking access away from homes. We'll work on, with people on an individual basis, on what their specific needs are. I'm sure we're going to have folks that are challenged with handicaps and those types of things. It's nothing new to us, it's what we do on most reconstrucks. We just go in and we deal with those things as we see them.
Thank you.
Just kind of ditto on what these guys are saying. I think the communication process is, it can be really frustrating if you can't even get into your home. So, you know, I think that just make sure that they're really on top of it. It's definitely something that desperately needs to be done. I've walked those streets many times, and so it's something that definitely needs to be done, so I'm really happy to see that. And using part of our pavement management dollars is great. You know, I had a question on, do you think it's going to hurt that 600, I mean, I guess $694,000? Are you just going to bump the people that, or the streets that you had on for next year? You'll just bump it to the following year? Are we going to be okay, or are there any streets that were really, we needed to do something immediate? Or are you feeling good about putting that $694,000 into this?
We could always use more money for pavement maintenance, we'll never have enough, so let me say that first. We feel pretty confident, especially after we did, looking at the upgrades to our IMS system and the pavement conditions, they actually bumped up a little bit. So our program has been very successful to maintain those pavement index levels at where we targeted them. So I don't think it's going to impact us in a negative way. You know, it may put some things on hold for maybe a year or two, but that's about the only impact.
Thanks, Kevin.
Mr. Powell?
Since Matt was kind of lobbying there, 2019 is supposed to be the year we do stuff in the south side of the tracks. And Main Street needs about two blocks, and then Florence Street probably about four to five blocks paved. That would really make those people happy if we can do that.
Okay. Can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Yes, it's number 3108. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Sunland Asphalt and Construction, Inc. to provide pavement reconstruction for the Rancho Grande subdivision, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $2,970,627, and authorizing the execution of a contract and authorizing the transfer of budget authority between accounts.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3108 as presented.
Second. Kevin, moving in second, Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, item K2, Consider Ordinance Number 3109. Mr. Tice?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mary Allen to make this presentation for you tonight.
Okay.
Hello, mayor and council. Staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize the execution of a contract with B Bar Enterprises, LLC for the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation specialist services in an amount not to exceed $65,000 per fiscal year. The contract is for the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation specialist services for approximately six to 10 projects per year. A competitive request for qualifications was published, and one submittal was received. The funding for the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation specialist services comes from the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation community development block grant allocation, as well as a home grant program that we received of $275,000, as well as program income. It is anticipated that $7,000 per project will be the fee. Tasks that are included in this service is initial walkthrough and evaluation of the home repairs with the owner, preparation of the spec bids and plan for the project, working with the contractor to review all, that they are meeting the planned specs, as well as building code compliance, and once the project is complete, work with the owner and contractor to complete the punch list for the warranty period.
So this $65,000 is just for the, that's?
Per year.
Yeah, but it's not to rehabilitate the house, it's for the consultation and the process with the construction company, or the remodeling company?
Correct, it's to work with the contractor.
So is that how much per house?
About $7,000.
Okay, so this will get us seven, eight houses?
Some take a little more, some take a little less.
Okay. Is that our goal this year, is seven or eight houses?
It's, we're hoping for 10.
10, okay.
We're hoping.
You did say 10. Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else, any other questions? Okay, can I get an ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number 3109. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Bar Enterprises, LLC to provide housing rehabilitation specialist services, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $65,000 per fiscal year, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3109 as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been second, it's been motion and second. Can I get a reading or a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, no boards and commissions. We'll move down then to item N, which is public hearings. And the first item on the list is N1, a public hearing in consideration of resolution 4360.20.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is the first of three major amendments to our general plan that you will be hearing this evening. As you may recall, under the state statute, communities can only amend their general plan once a year. And additionally, the state statute sets forth a series of processes and notifications that must occur. And so in this case, we closed our application window on July 1st, and since July 1st to tonight, we've been processing these three applications through several public hearings and extensive notification, which we'll discuss with you in just a moment. This first amendment is actually an amendment to the text. It does not pertain to any particular piece of property, but what it does is to seek to create a new land use category within our general plan called large mixed-use land use. As you might recall, the general plan break, is not a zoning document, but it does break up the city into about six or seven separate land use categories, our largest of which is our neighborhoods land use category. Also, we have our business and commerce land use category, our manufacturing and industry, our agricultural, and our rural, and our community center. But none of these existing land use categories really allow for today's large mixed-use developments that we might see, that really mix the residential, commercial, and even some industrial and entertainment uses. So this particular land use category is being created to really allow for those kind of developments that might be proposed within our community. So a little bit more details about the category. It does intend to allow for the development of large, multipurpose, mixed-use developments, as I mentioned, provides an alternative to conventional residential, commercial, and industrial developments by promoting imaginative and integrated planning. More particular, I think, there's a couple very significant assets, aspects of this land use category. One is the size. The category has to be a minimum of 320 acres, so we're talking large developments. Two, it has to be under one unified control or master developer control. So initially, someone has to own the 320 acres or larger sites and plan them and control them so that when they're sold off to future owners, they're built according to whatever this land use category would allow. And lastly, the only zoning district that would be allowed in this category is PAD zoning. As I mentioned, this is not zoning, but when they do zone, PAD is the only zone district available, and it requires a development agreement because of the integrated and unified nature of the development. You can see here on this slide some of those appropriate land uses that I just mentioned, including both horizontally mixed use, which means building beside building, maybe an area of residential, area of commercial, area of industrial, or vertical, where you might have the first couple floors be retail or office and residential above. So you could do mixed use both vertically and horizontally. As I mentioned, the only zone district that it would be allowed would be our PAD zone. We also, staff developed this land use category, and as we worked on developing it, we looked to what would be appropriate density and intensity standards that we might apply to this, that we would evaluate any future zoning proposal against. So as I mentioned, minimum size, 320 acres. Then if you were, if the development, the PAD zoning would propose multifamily development, that would be limited to no more than 25 dwelling units per acre, that would be the max density. Also, there'd be a maximum density for the single-family residential of 6 DUs per acre. Now, you may be aware that we have our residential, our PAD residential design guidelines that further limit typically our single-family residential development to lots of, that are between seven, any lot smaller than 7,000, down to six, has to be offset by a lot that's over 8,000. The resulting density under our residential design guidelines ends up around 4 DUs per acre. So you can see that this six would exceed the normal. So you can see that this six would exceed the normal 4DUs per acre. However, that could not be achieved without some kind of relief granted by council because it would be a PAD and it would still be subject to the residential design guidelines. Those residential design guidelines do allow council to consider exceptions to the, essentially the 4DU per acre limit for innovative and creative designs on a case-by-case basis. So if they, if this development to its PAD zoning, if, and this came to you, they would actually ask, ask for an exception, they would have to ask for an exception to increase the density from the 4DUs to the 6DUs if the development actually had single-family detached. So there is still that, that limit on there, but there is the opportunity for a developer to ask you for an exception. Of course, this is not, this is a mixed-use project. It's not a pure neighborhoods residential kind of development. It's a mixed use, and in fact, the next set of rules below actually reinforce that concept by saying residential area within this 320 acres cannot exceed 50%. So you couldn't have, out of 320, you couldn't have more than 160 acres of residential. The other 160 acres would have to be some other land uses or mix of land uses. So it is clearly a mixed land use category. In open space, we did propose that the open space for residential would be the same as any other residential PAD, which is 15%. And for the commercial or industrial areas, we are recommending that standard be 10% is the same as it is for other industrial or commercial PAD. So the open space standards are basically the same. There are 12 general plan review criteria within the zoning code that any, any general plan amendment must be found to be in compliance with. So staff has analyzed all 12 of those. They're in our staff report that was attached to your RCA that we presented to planning commission, but I'm just going to talk about three of these pretty briefly. The, the one is that the proposed amendment supports the community-first vision of the general plan. And you can see here what that community-first vision is on the screen, and staff found that we believe that this new land use category will in fact allow implementation of the community-first vision, that it's intended to create large mixed-use cohesive developments that will spur economic opportunities mixed with diverse residence and residential opportunities, new educational facilities, provide multimodal transportation, and connected open space, which are all kind of best practices, best planning practices that are embedded in the smart growth principles that are one of our other review criteria. So you can see on the screen, the, some of the smart growth principles that are used across the country and are embedded in our general plan as well, and we find that the, this land use category of large-scale mixed use will allow for those kinds of developments to occur. The project on the screen is actually Kirland Commons. You may be familiar with Kirland Commons, but it's really kind of a, a nice mixed-use project that this, this land use category would allow to, to develop if there was a market for that in Casa Grande. So some of those notification requirements that I mentioned started, started with a 60-day review period to all the groups listed, including, including the council. So all of you should have received some background information on this early on in the process. Another notice of the, this, of the public hearings that were held, and there were two public hearings held by planning commission in accordance with state law on two different locations. The October 11th hearing was at the main library, and the November 1st meeting was here in the council chambers at the November planning commission, which brings us to today's meeting to, of council for one additional public hearing and a council consideration of the resolution. The planning commission did vote unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval for this major general plan text amendment to add the large mixed-use general plan category to one of the land use categories available on our general plan.
I do. So I was looking at this, and I'm still considering it, and it's almost like we're, it's like building a mini-city within the city, and I'm not sure I'm a fan of doing that. I'm, I'm more a fan of community and especially the industrial part of this. I just, I'm just not sure that this is something that I feel is good for our community and that would promote what we're, you know, what we see as our community, that mix of the world and, and the future in building for it. I just, it just disturbs me.
So, Councilmember McCourtson, maybe I could say a few words to make you feel better about this.
Okay.
First off, I'm going to tell you that, you know, we started down the path of developing this because our next item we're going to see is a general plan amendment for the Atessa project, and the Atessa project did not fit into any of our current categories. So we started building and creating this new land use category with the idea that we needed to create a land use category that Atessa development would fit in. However, as we, as staff continued to work on this, we realized that there are other really good potential applications for this land use category today within Casa Grande. One example would be Francisco Grande. That development would be an excellent application of this. If you think about Francisco Grande, the Montgomery Road on its west boundary, potentially the I-11 corridor, and so they have, you know, a lot of acreage there. It's very undeveloped, right? So they have a lot of potential to add new residential, new commercial development, new service development, and of course, the educational facilities and the recreational facilities. So again, that's could be a classic-looking mixed-use development there. Another one, another development that we, the planning commission dealt with about two years ago was actually the Walton Holdings on the east side of the interstate between north of the promenade to Quartzon Road. Of course, Quartzon Road's going to have an interchange, and the proposal there was to have some, some fairly intensive commercial, but also some multifamily development. We did not, our commerce, our commerce and business land use category did not allow for the mixing of land uses to allow the residential to be introduced. We actually, they were actually forced to separate it to two different zoning categories, which really takes away from the unified planning and unified design. So that's another great use for, for this category, I believe, along the interstate there. And then you have, of course, on the other side of the interstate, a lot of development on the west side of I-10 from Florence up to Cottonwood that again, potentially could make use of this kind of land use category. So what, what this allows for is really a mixing of land use. Now, when you create these mixed land uses, they are kind of activity centers that can have all the uses together. They support one another, but you knew, you might have all the uses that you might find in the city, but they're not isolated from the rest of the city fabric.
And I, and I, you, I think you hit on the right word is it's, it's isolated and it's probably the thing that I'm concerned about, again, always wanting to feel that we are a part of a community and that, and that we have our neighborhoods and that, and we have that identity, but that overall, it to make a really healthy, vibrant city to see, and always to have that, that city core, that center core. And I, and maybe I just have the wrong vision on this. Maybe I'm not seeing this the way, you know, that, that you're seeing it, and I'm willing to, you know, to be, to hear something different other than that.
No?
Just as a follow-up, and I apologize, it may have been in there, but on the two hearings that we already had, was there any public there? Have there been any complaints or concerns presented?
There, there were no public opposition voiced. There was, there was some public. There were representatives of the Atessa development. I believe Mr. McGuire was probably there and a few others, but no opposition voiced, no.
Matt?
Yeah, because I see this as, I mean, it's not going to be plopped down in the middle because of the sheer size, 320 acres.
Right.
So it'd be very well planned out, and I picture like you have an entertainment area, you know, and then you have like maybe some live workspaces where you have the downtown, you know, the shops downstairs and the houses upstairs, you know, kind of like a, a Tempe or the Kirland Commons was a perfect example. And then you have restaurants, entertainment, so it's going to create a lot of, a lot of activity, and it's also going to create a lot of sales tax revenue and property tax. But yeah, a lot of people now, and you said it, you know, people don't want big houses, you know, and they want to live in these areas where they can walk to this place and then walk home.
Walkable.
And, and you know, makes it walkable, but I don't think it's going to be isolated because when you go into, say, Tempe or Scottsdale, I mean, Tempe, you got the old, the old town Tempe, and then you've got the new places, and just like Scottsdale, you have the Kirland Commons, and it's just right, it just all blends in together. So if it's planned right, I mean, I think it'd be good, and especially with the, I mean, the race, the Atessa racetracks for, I mean, you got entertainment, you've got, you've got airport possibly, industrial, yeah.
And I'm, I'm in favor as you take that and that, yes. And maybe the Francisco Grande area is a good example, too.
But I think it's, and I think probably if we had this one, we did the mall, the mall would probably be like this type of area.
Right, right, you could integrate around the mall.
With that, with that zoning.
Could, could I have a quick education on the process? If this amends the general plan and a developer comes in and wants to utilize this process, do, do we, do we have to identify the land area in the general plan before they can proceed with?
So, good question, Councilman Huddleston. It's, first off, if, if council tonight creates this, this category as a potential category that a land developer can use, their first step would be to ask for their property to be put into this category. Their property already is in some other general plan category, so they would come in with an actual request that would have to go through planning commission and city council as a major amendment to the general plan to say, I would like my property to be taken out of category X and to put into this one. So that's step one. The next step would be, before they could develop anything, they would have to do a PAD zoning. The PAD zoning would be, this land use category would set some parameters and what they could request in their PAD zoning, but that PAD zoning would have to go through planning commission, public hearing, and then the council for another public hearing. So essentially, if, if council approves this category tonight, you're going to have two future bites of the apple to look before any prop, any property that's proposed to be developed with this kind of land use.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Anybody? Mr. Powell?
You know, one of the things that you know, Paul, that I really disagree with is making special exceptions for people that are big and have lots of money, and the six dwelling units an acre, to me is ridiculous. I don't know how you get six dwelling units on an acre. Everybody has to do four. Why do they get a special favor? Why don't they have to do four?
Councilman Powell, as I, I think the thing to keep in perspective is, they can't get, they can't achieve the six unless council approves an exception to your residential PAD design guidelines.
Right.
And those residential PAD design guidelines already allow for an exception, and there's four, yeah, four categories of exception.
What are the categories?
The category is one, infill, which, two, affordable housing, three, a development proposal so, so unique to the city that strict conformance with all the requirements of these standards would be counterproductive to achieving the diversity, creativity, and sustainability sought in the PAD. And four, a larger lot, single-family home development where no lot is less than 1.25 acres can deviate from some provisions of this, of these standards. So already in our adopted residential design standards, we have exception process where any developer can ask council for an exception. You don't have to grant it, but it's already your policy that that exception can be requested.
Somebody comes in from Casa Grande, you're going to let them in town put six of those on an acre?
Well, Councilman Powell, again, it's, we're going to, if somebody asks for that exception to planning staff, we would, we would...
Why make exceptions? We have the rules.
We would review that exception request against these standards and these, and these policy documents that you've adopted, that council's adopted.
Well, if it doesn't adopt it, it doesn't happen, you know?
Well, you already have adopted these exceptions, is my point. And so if somebody did ask us, we would evaluate those exceptions against these criteria and then bring it to council and to planning commission and the council with a, with a recommendation of whether or not to grant it or not. I can't tell you what our position would be without knowing the specific case.
Let me ask you, it says diversity in, in housing. What else do you have?
Diversity, creativity, and sustainability.
No, no, no. Numbers, how many else is going to be? Are you just going to build a little six units an acre?
No.
It's residential, or do you have some diversity there?
Yes.
You have to build one for 8,000, or 8,000-foot lots also, right?
So let me, let me answer that question a couple ways, Councilman Powell. First off, I'm going to tell you that the normal standards of no lot smaller than 6,000, any lot smaller than, than six has to be, have an equal number of eight is absolutely the standard that applies unless you grant an exception, unless council grants an exception. That's the first answer. The second thing is, if you look at the screen, in terms of limiting the amount of land uses, you can see the residential area cannot exceed 50% of the acreage. That means it has to be a mixed land use. So if you have 320 acres, only 160 of it can be residential. The other 160 has to be other land use types. So you don't get to build the whole 320 acres as residential, and you don't, and you would not be allowed to achieve the 6DUs per acre unless city council approved an exception to the residential design standards.
Well, the residential, it would be half of the total acreage, right?
That's true, sir.
Which is a lot of homes.
Yes.
And, and are those homes going to be big, they're little, are they going to be six an acre?
They would only be six an acre if city council approved an exception to the residential design standards. That only allow essentially four per acre.
Well, four is what they would get normally, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And they do not get six unless council approved an exception.
So where is this in today's work to do an exception, or?
Pardon?
No.
Oh, you haven't made a...
No.
There's no proposal to be granted an exception, right? There's no PAD zoning before you.
I want to make sure that we don't get that as part of the new land category, is that they can build six units on an acre?
That's not what this does. It's not what it says.
What's that? It says right here.
This land use category, as you can see on the screen, would allow single-family residential density not to exceed such an upper limit of 6DUs per acre. We know that the residential design standards set a limit of essentially 4DUs per acre unless an exception is granted. So if council were to grant an exception, you, you are authorized to do so, but the exception could not go more than 6DUs per acre. You could grant an exception for five DUs per acre or six DUs per acre, or you could deny the exception and make them build to four.
Oh, when would the exception come up?
At time of the PAD zoning.
Okay. But we're going to adopt this with this wording so that in the new PAD zoning, they can have six per acre?
They can only have six per acre if you approve the exception. It would not be automatic.
When would the exception be entered?
Today, just, Councilman Powell, today, a developer can propose a PAD with 6DUs per acre and ask for the exception today. We haven't seen one, but you, the, the residential design guideline document authorizes for somebody to apply for that exception, but council has to approve it.
It's not authorizing six, only when they come with the PAD at a later date.
That's correct.
This is... Any, any other questions, comments? All right, I'm going to call for the, call for the ordinance.
Actually, you've got to open the public hearing.
Oh, this is a public hearing. All right. Then I will actually open the floor to any public who's here who might want to speak on behalf of this issue.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Nick Wood. I'm with the law firm of Snell &amp; Wimmer. My address is One Arizona Center, and I represent Dan Rick, the developer of Atessa. Maybe I can help clear up Councilman Powell's question. It's a very good question. What we're asking today is for a general plan amendment. It doesn't grant us any rights, doesn't grant us any privileges. What it allows us to do is to come forward at a later date with a zoning case. It basically lays out our design, our plan, development standards, design standards, use standards, all incorporated into one package. At that time, then the council has the discretion to say, yes, I like this, no, I don't like this, I want to remove this, I want to add this. So it allows all of us basically to put together a, a project that you're comfortable with, that you think is very good for Casa Grande, and one that we're very comfortable with for us as well. So again, tonight is just, allows us the opportunity to ask for those things, and absent the approval tonight, then we wouldn't even have the opportunity to, to ask the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my, my last question again is, is will this be a part of the general plan that says you can build six units on an acre? On the new general plan?
I think to ask that you can do it. That's what it's doing, that helps.
No, but I'm saying, is that what it'll say on the general plan when it's done?
That you can ask to do it. Just that you can ask, it doesn't give you a right, you can ask to do it.
Where does it say ask?
In the residential design standards.
Go ahead, Bob.
Paul, I guess my question is, if, if that's an issue, why do we even say that? Why do we say not to exceed six? Why don't we just say not to exceed four? That is consistent with our current policy and zoning. And if they want to exceed four, they can, they can ask for an exception. Why, why do we even say this in here?
Councilman Huddleston, I'm going to ask city attorney to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but here's the way I see it. Well, you see, what we're talking about tonight is a general plan category. The, our residential, PAD residential design guidelines don't give applicants any authority to ask for a, an exception from the general plan. They, what they do is allow an exception from this standard, this PAD zoning standard. So our code allows exceptions from our PAD zoning standard. Our code does not allow exceptions from the general plan. So in my opinion, if you, if this said four D use per acre, I don't think they would have the ability to ask for any exception. But I'll ask city attorney to weigh in on that.
And thank you, Director Tice. I, I think if we talk about sort of general plan and zoning, and of course, if you haven't had any experience yet as a council member, it's probably almost impossible to, to put those two together. But the way that the Arizona statutes work, the general plan sets forth sort of your big picture items, but it also sets forth certain criteria. And when you ask to rezone property, the rezoning must be consistent with your general plan category. So if the general plan category said a maximum of four D units per acre, you couldn't grant the exception under any circumstance to do that. In fact, by including a maximum of sixty use per acre, what Director Tice has done is essentially put an upper limit on the type of exception that they can ask for. But if they, currently, a couple of different things, as he said. One, nobody fits in this category today, right? Atesa has asked, and if this, if this tax amendment does pass, Atesa would ask them to be included in that category. But the ultimate, even if they got a zoning or a general plan of, what is it called, Paul?
Large.
We don't have it yet, right?
Large mixed-use category.
Large mixed-use category. They would still need to rezone that to PAD. And then what they would be restricted to is, if you do this, there are certain criteria you must do. It must be subject to a development agreement. It must be at least three hundred and twenty acres. It cannot exceed six DU residential. The residential can't exceed fifty percent. But all of those are just maximum caps. And so even if you had a general plan category that allows up to six use D acres, D use per acre, it simply gives you as council the opportunity to hear those proposals. Nothing would require you to ever rezone anybody into this category. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And if, if I could, because I always do this at this time of year, I usually do it right before you vote, but just to remind the mayor and council, general plans are, major amendments to general plans are very special. We're only allowed to do them once per year, and it does require the affirmative vote of five council members to pass any of those.
Okay. Yes, the.
Good evening again, mayor and city council members. John McGar, nine forty-one, East Penny Lane. So, not to be too much of a dead horse here, but all that's being asked at this point is the opportunity for somebody to come in and present something to planning commission and city council for consideration. We're not approving anything here today. They may, Atesa, which is the current project in front of us, may never come to you and ask for six dwelling units per acre. They don't have final plans out yet as far as I'm understood. So they want to be able to come to you and make their case, starting with staff and Paul's team. They may say, we don't think this makes sense, and they may make a recommendation to planning and zoning and city council, that they don't think it should be approved for various reasons. All this is doing right now is allowing the case to be made so that we can entertain new types of zoning and development that may be beneficial at whatever time those projects are presented to us. This is a really broad, open category to allow us to, to consider those types of projects, and that's all it is here, and I recommend that you approve this, thank you.
John, you have to know what's in it. You have to know what's in it.
Pat Johnson with, with Atesa. This kind of thing that we're going through right now is unique, and it's a little bit different. But at no point in what Paul's presented here does it say Atesa. This is amendment to your law, to your zoning code, your, your plan codes, your plan areas, to allow for this type of deal to be built. If I'm placed into that category, I have to come back to you with a PAD plan that you get to approve. If you should decide tonight to vote that your PAD plan would not consider six, but would be at four, that's the maximum I could ever get regardless of what that darn thing says. Because that, the PAD plan that we're required to use is what's going to override. Your current PAD plan allows for exceptions that would take it up to six. So nobody's asking for anybody to make that, but if they make this one lower, then it's going to govern. I like to see it say two hundred, but I know that. But the point is, is, I, and by the way, if I look at my plan, I don't think I've got anything on that stupid thing that's got anywhere near a six. But I'm not the only one that's going to be potentially using this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then I would like to call for an ordinance number then. All right, we need to close, close the floor. Anybody else need to, would like to speak? Sorry? Okay, then I'll close the floor and we'll. It's a resolution, please, Gloria.
Resolution number four, three, six, zero, point, two, zero. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande general plan twenty twenty adopted by resolution number four, three, six, zero, and subsequent amendments thereto by making certain tax amendments to the Casa Grande general plan twenty twenty and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of resolution number four, three, six, zero, point, two, zero.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
No.
Mayor Proton McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Move to the next public hearing item, which is to hear or consider resolution number four, three, six, zero, point, two, one.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this general plan amendment is for a specific site, and it is for the Atesa site. And Atesa is asking for a general plan amendment to change their current general plan land use category of agricultural to the large mixed-use category. You may be familiar with the Atesa site. It's located south of the eight. Their west boundary is Montgomery Road, I believe, and then their east boundary is Bianco, and on the south, they abut the.
Oona Odom.
Toda Odom, yes, thank you, sir. So the request involves twenty-four hundred acres of undeveloped land, of the future Atesa development, a, a mixed-use project. Now, Atesa is not within the city. It's within the county. It's actually like three miles away from our city boundary. However, it is within our planning area and therefore subject to us placing a general plan land use category on it. However, because it's in the county, it also is, has county zoning and a county general plan. The county calls their general plan a comprehensive plan, but a county general plan land use category as well. And in the county, their category, let me just come back to that, is, is employment. So this is our existing general plan on the left. You can see that the twenty-four hundred acres is in the agricultural land use category. And on the right, you can see the proposal, which is to put the project into the large mixed-use category. So backing up a little bit, the request then is really intended to create consistency between the Penale County general plan for this site and the Casa Grande general plan for the site. And frankly, what's, what's likely to occur here is that this project is undergoing a zoning case in the county, to be zoned PAD in the county. If and when it is proposed for annexation at some point in the future, which likely will happen at some point in the future, then we would have to zone it in something equivalent to the county zoning, the county PAD. Putting the project in the large mixed-use category would allow us to consider a PAD for the property similar to the PAD that the county may adopt for it. You can see the land uses proposed in this project in the county, in the county PAD, and again, we don't have a PAD zoning before us, but there's all these land uses you can see here, which is clearly a mixed land use project. And we talked about how if this general plan amendment is allowed, is approved by council this evening, it will align the general plan category with the city and the county for the property. We have the same twelve review criteria within the zoning code that we need to evaluate for compliance as we look at any general plan amendment. Staff has done that. Our specific findings for these review criteria are embedded in your staff report. We're just going to talk about the same ones that we talked about just a second ago. The first is the implementation of the vision first, the community vision first of the general plan. We do believe that this Atesa project in this, by putting it in this land use category, has the opportunity to create jobs, diverse housing opportunities, recreation, shopping, and leisure. A true mixed-use project. That's sort of the, that graphic on the right gives you a sense of some of the different land uses that are currently being considered for the Atesa that that land use plan is not before you this evening. But the, the Atesa project and this proposed amendment would actually create potential for creating jobs for Casa Grande residents, jobs in the areas that you see the bullets on if this Atesa development comes to fruition. This general plan amendment filed the same notification and public hearing process as the prior one, the sixty-day review period sent to all of the agencies and governments that are listed here. The fifteen-day notice for this public hearing. Planning commission held two public, separate public hearings on this project, one at the library, one here. And I, my recollection is that there were positive comments made at the public hearings, but no negative comments, and I believe the minutes of those meetings have been provided to council with your RCA. So here we are tonight for holding the last public hearing and council vote on this proposed general plan amendment for the Atesa site from agriculture to the large mixed-use category.
Thank you, Paul. I think, and I got out of it on the last process, but I actually want to do the public hearing first, and then I'll ask for questions from the council. So I will open the floor for item N two, resolution four, three, six, zero, point, two, one. The rezoning, or not rezoning, the, the mixed use.
General plan.
Land use, general plan use change. Anybody have any comments? Public floor is open.
Mayor, members of the council, Nick Wood, Snell and Wimmer, one Arizona Center, Phoenix, and again, I represent Dan Rick. Again, this is just the very first step. Before we can even come to you with a zoning case on this project, we'll have to go through an annexation process. And that means that we'll have to reach out to the property owners between this property and the current corporate limits of the city of Casa Grande, and they will all have to agree that they, they want to become part of the city as well. As we go through that process, in fact, we've already begun that process, we've received positive comments, but again, there's much, much work to do. But what this allows us to do is, again, once we, if we are able to get through that process, and if you decide to annex our property and the other properties into the city, then the next step is we will bring to you a zoning case. But the zoning case will be far behind, again, the annexation, the pre-annexation development agreement, and all the work that we have to do to get there. So this is basically the first step. And what could happen, certainly no guarantee of what will happen, because again, we all have a lot of work to do, and again, I want to thank your staff. Their work, it's, it's exceptional as, as usual, and, you know, we just finished Lucid recently, and, and now hopefully this will be the next one.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then, ask council if you have any questions of Mr. Tice on this particular project. Nothing? All right, Gloria, can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number four, three, six, zero, point, two, one. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande general plan twenty twenty adopted by resolution number four, three, six, zero, and subsequent amendments thereto by changing the land use designation from agriculture to large mixed use on property generally located south of Hannah Road between Montgomery Road and Bianco Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number four, three, six, zero, point, two, one, as presented.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, the last public hearing we have on here is N three. It's a, consider resolution number four, three, six, zero, dot, two, two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is the last of our three general plan amendments and has to do with a project known as Florence and Ash. The, this site is a thirty-four acre site located at the northwest corner of Ash and Florence Street, just sort of to the southwest of our downtown, as you can, in our south side neighborhood, as you can, as you can see on the graphic. The request is to change its current general plan land use category from manufacturing and industry to community center. So this would, this community center would allow a certain limited mixed-use development, so that's what they're asking for here. It could have single-family residential attached and detached, multifamily retail services uses. services, uh, uses. We believe the amended land use designation and proposed uses are compatible with and provide a, will provide a transition from the downtown area, south side neighborhood, and the employment area to the west, as I'll describe in just one second. So, here is, uh, a graphic that shows you the existing general plan land use category on the left. You can see it is the manufacturing industry, but it's the sort of the, the edge of that, of that category. Um, and as you can also see, the actual downtown area and the south side neighborhood is already in this community center land use category. So, this change would extend that community center land use category into this thirty-four acres. Therefore, changing it would no longer be eligible for industrial development, manufacturing. It would then be allowed for development into residential, uh, commercial service uses, um, but not, no longer industrial. The same twelve, uh, land use categories, uh, land use criteria, review criteria apply Again, we, we looked closely at the smart growth principles of, of basically creating, uh, walkable neighborhoods, allowing for a range of housing opportunities, uh, and, uh, mixing land uses as well here. Staff believes that this is, uh, exciting and that it's the opportunity to be the first, uh, new downtown neighborhood development in decades. We believe that the development of this site with, uh, predominantly residential uses, uh, which we think will occur, there would be some complementary uses, will really, uh, be a boon to the downtown by providing new customers for our downtown businesses, as well as an opportunity for, uh, employee, employees to live in a location where they can easily, uh, walk or bike, uh, or commute to the employment opportunities to the west. We believe this is really, would be a good transition, uh, between our industrial area and our downtown. Development of this site really would have very little impact in terms of city infrastructure, all the public infrastructure, the streets, uh, sewer, water, um, the, the infrastructure is essentially adjacent to the, to the property. We did, uh, file the same notification and, uh, process as required by the state law for this general plan amendment, including the two public hearings by the planning commission. The planning commission did vote unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to council for this adoption of this major general plan amendment to change the land use for this thirty-four acre site from manufacturing industry to community center.
Okay, I'm gonna open it public. All right, so I'm gonna, this is a public hearing, so on item N. three, uh, public hearing considering resolution of four, resolution number four-three-six-zero-dot-two-two. And again, a major general plan amendment change on this piece of property.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rob Goopser. I work with Hilgarth Wilson, twenty-one forty-one, East Highland, Phoenix, eight-five-zero-one-six. On behalf of my client, uh, Larry Yount with LKY Development, uh, we heard here this evening, obviously for the general plan amendment for the thirty-four acres at Florence and Ash. Uh, as Mr. Tice had alluded to during his presentation, this request is to change a general plan from the manufacturing industry land use category to community commercial. Uh, this will allow us to, uh, present a future rezone opportunity, uh, to provide new opportunities for a range of housing, diverse housing opportunities, uh, in an infill area that's just close to about a quarter mile away from the downtown area. As we mentioned, as you mentioned during the presentation, it's the newest, uh, housing development in the area for quite some time, so very excited about this opportunity. This category does create a logical extension of the current community center land use categories, which are to the north and to the east of the site, and it also brings back a former residential option that was on the site previously. Uh, in addition to the residential, Mr. Yount is exploring a possibility of, of providing a, either a technical or vocational school on the site that will help to train and educate the workforce for the, uh, specific end users and potentially entice additional employment opportunities to this area by knowing that there's a, a technical or vocational school nearby. In terms of the civic engagement, we've met all the, the noticing requirements per state statutes. Uh, we, at the planning commission, the two planning commissions, we didn't have any speakers, uh, there for support or opposition besides ourself. Uh, we have not received any sort of notifications from any of the residents that were notified on this project. Uh, I just wanna commend staff. It's been great to work with Mr. Tice and his staff, especially, uh, Joe Horn. Uh, he's been super responsive and it, it's just been a pleasure to be able to work with him, so I, I appreciate all that. So with that, I'm happy to conclude my presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Do you guys have any questions of a speaker?
Actually, this is kinda weird, but on the, uh, so like on the west side here, there's a little corner that is not in the red area. Is that gonna be kind of abandoned in the old zoning, or would that, you know, you know what I mean?
Yes.
You guys own that piece?
By the twelve, by the number twelve. Yeah.
I, I can probably address that question for you, Councilman Herman. So, that property is a different ownership. Um, we actually encouraged applicants to reach out to their owner to have them join this request, because you can see what's gonna happen is it leaves a little, little piece of manufacturing industrial there. They were unable, uh, to make contact with that property owner. Um, that they're, uh, an absentee owner, um, and it's mail return actually in the Sessor records, so it's difficult to contact them. But, um, if, if in fact this general plan amendment, uh, goes through tonight, when we do our general plan update, uh, we'll, we'll blend, we'll convert that piece to the same land use category.
So it wasn't the fact that they didn't want to, so you guys?
Couldn't find them.
That's correct. We, we did try very diligently to get ahold of them, to include them as part of the...
I like your solution, we can kinda...
Yeah.
Make sense. Okay. I just didn't wanna have then like one high-rise right there in the middle.
I don't have a question. Okay, thank you. The floor is still open, anyone else like to address council on this topic?
No, it's a great idea.
Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor and, uh, throw it back to the council for comments and questions.
Larry, I think this is wonderful. This could really set the whole nature of the south side and change it. Uh, we, we've needed something like this desperately. I know this property really, really well from growing up, and, uh, I, I think it would really be a wonderful thing to have happen on the south side. We've been saying twenty-nineteen is our time to do things in the south side, and I can't think of anything better than what you're proposing to do.
Anybody else? Matt?
Just another kind of comment. I think it's neat to have a good buffer from, because we do have some heavier industrial right there, so this will provide a good buffer into the housing. And if you can get a, some kind of educational thing, that would be...
That's...
That'd be amazing, so, good luck and, uh, thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else?
Just quickly too, is it, to reiterate all that, plus it's gonna bring activity. You gotta have activity to, to really develop a, um, a good downtown area. You're gonna have people passing through, they're gonna be coming down to this, and again, I do hope that this is some sort of a technical school. Um, there's so many opportunities out there, and, yeah, I like to see that on the south side.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for resolution, Gloria.
Resolution number four-three-six-zero-point-two-two. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande general plan twenty-twenty, adopted by resolution number four-three-six-zero, and subsequent amendments thereto, by changing the land use designation from manufacturing and industry to community center on the property generally located at the northwest corner of Ash Avenue, Ash Avenue and Florence Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of, uh, resolution number forty-three-sixty-point-two-two as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, so, um, we have reports, item P, does anybody wanna, I'll start over here with you, Donna.
Um, just a couple quick, quick, quick things. Boarding Commission Dinner was last Thursday. It was really nice, um, to see so many people there, and then, uh, you were very much missed, uh, Saturday at the Electric Light Parade, but we had a good, uh, good crowd down, downtown. And, um, and then I just wanted to thank Matt for, uh, his services as mayor from town. Um, and, um, he also attended today, uh, with me, the, um, new office, um, ribbon cutting for the Casa Grande Alliance, um, that has, uh, entered into an agreement with, um, the school district, the elementary school district, and their office is now located at the Casa Grande Middle School, uh, office, now that they have redone their schools. So it's a great partnership and they do a lot of work with us too, so, uh, Matt, thank you for doing that, and that's all I have.
Larry?
Uh, there was a recent article in the newspaper that reported how certain cities in Pinal County were rated regarding available internet access and different speeds, uh, in Cas, and Casa Grande, we didn't fare very well on that, and as everybody knows, this is one of my, uh, pet projects that I feel we're at a point now where it's as important to have this available as it is to have good streets and public safety, and, uh, what, uh, internet, it's, it's, and access is a major part of our strategic plan. The article is helpful in reporting what is and what is not available. It's my hope that in the next eighteen months, we can make real strides in improving a much-needed access to the internet. I know that's a big part of our stra, strategic plant, plan. You're putting some things together with Cox, so, um, hopefully we'll fare better in a few months. I also wanna thank Mr. Powell and David Snyder and Supervisor Stephen Miller for their efforts in fighting for our water rights. Pinal County has been intentionally ignored by the powers north of us, and if we are able to achieve anything, it will be due to the efforts of these gentlemen. I, I just don't know how they continue to defend the idea that we're not part of this. Um, also, I'm excited about the wall that heals. I'm so proud of our community and its efforts to reach out to our veterans in so many ways. We have housing, we have triage, we have, uh, I know my husband went down, he lost it, I always forget the name, is it a DD twelve or something? And that he lost his and they helped him get a new one and a card. Uh, and then finally, just wanna, uh, welcome Mr. Huddleston, uh, looking forward to working with him, uh, little history there is his mother. Uh, she actually taught at Stanfield School when I sat on, uh, the school board there, and then, my daughters, uh, went to school there, she taught, and then...
You were on the school board, weren't you?
I was, but then also, not only was Jennifer taught by her, but when Jennifer got her, uh, teaching degree, she went out and taught with Mrs. Huddleston, and she told me, "Mother, I just can't call her Shirley." You watch that. I know your mother, so welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
I don't have a lot to report except a sore throat and a cough, but I'm, Bob, I'm really happy to have you aboard, and, and I thought the meeting went really nice tonight, and I think Ralph was appreciated and, uh, knows that he means a lot to all of us, so...
He's lucky when he got to go home.
Yes, welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
I think you're gonna be moving over there, so you probably won't be my neighbor here for long. But, um, um, just a couple things, I wanted to, um, I'm sure you all read that the auction awarded CARA a hundred thousand dollars for the homeless, um, coalition. Um, that's gonna be used for a caseworker. Um, pardon?
It was a hundred thirty.
Oh, a hundred thirty, it was a hundred thirty? Either way, we're excited about that, um, but also, it's a hundred thousand. Um, also, um, we, the, um, CARA was also awarded from the Community Hospital Foundation, three hundred thousand dollars. They received their check, and so we're really excited about that. It's gonna go towards, um, medical services for the homeless, so hopefully, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna try to partner, and it's gonna be for a nurse practitioner. So we submitted that grant, um, a couple months ago, and we just received the check, so we're really, really excited. Mary Lou is very excited about that. And you know, and I think just by us going through this process of our strategic plan, and it's a community-wide initiative, you know, where there's so many stakeholders that got involved in this is what helped with these, um, grant applications, so I really wanna thank, I know Julie Crockett was here earlier, she's on our committee, but, you know, the, the excitement and the passion and the willingness for people to help, um, and make a difference in this community has just been great, and it's really helped us get these. So thank you to the Community Hospital Foundation. Um, for those of you that haven't gotten online and filled out the survey for the recycle program, you know, we are trying to determine what we're gonna do, so that, I think, is open until the tenth, is that right, Larry? So please encourage your friends, family, neighbors to get on there and fill out that survey, because it's gonna really mean a lot to us once we have to make that important decision on, on recycling. So as far as events, yes, the Electric Light Parade was just fantastic, you know, um, thank you to, you know, the Community Services Department, and it was, every year, it just amazes me, and, of course, I have my favorites, but we'll see who wins, but, um, I was over by Donna and missed you dick this year. I was like, what happened to dick? Um, but, you know, Donna, of course, is so excited, and, I mean, yeah, you, you, you just get so excited and, um, love being there, so appreciate that. And then the Boards and Commission Dinner, thank you to all the volunteers that dedicate so much time and energy, and it's just, you know, it, it just amazes me how many people help and are willing to serve the community. And a couple things for our local high school, you know, we forget sometimes, you know, we get busy, and especially since we don't have high school kids anymore, but, you know, the, the Casa Grande Union cheer team got first place in the state qualifier, um, this weekend, and it is just amazing. I mean, we, we had cheerleaders there at this, at the school, and for them to beat out some of these schools, it is really amazing, you guys, and I'm just so proud of the coach. Katie Kramer has brought that program, and to, if you're not in that cheerleading world, it's a big deal. And, and for them to be in first place in their division and, um, and they're going into the state competition. And then the Casa Grande Union Band got fourth place at state, which again, I had band kids, and to get fourth place in the state and the schools they compete against are just amazing. So I just wanted to shout out to, you know, the, the band director, Martin Habda, and Coach Katie Kramer, and the fantastic things that they're doing over there at the school. It's great for, you know, for us to have that recognition. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, Lisa. Bob?
Well, um, I only started an hour ago.
I have to say, it's not a requirement.
Nothing to report, other than, very excited to be here. I look forward to working with all of you, and, uh, I hope to maintain the level of excellence that you guys have all, uh, have all established over the years, so thank you for welcoming me.
You saved some money when you came on. Used to, you had to buy everybody a drink.
We can still make that a requirement.
Yeah, we can make that happen.
Matt?
Uh, thank you. I have a few things. Uh, tomorrow night, uh, downtown is the Neon Park kickoff, or?
No, it's the second one.
Yeah, the se, it's not the kickoff, that's why I said kickoff, 'cause we already did one. Anyway, if you play me little chairs with the mayor, watch it.
Be careful.
Right, Donna? Um, but yeah, it was a lot of fun last time, kind of like a sock hop.
Yeah, it was.
It was pretty fun. It was really fun, actually. Um, I, and on Thursday at four-thirty is a ribbon cutting at CGQ, the new barbecue restaurant, downtown.
What time is the thing at Neon Park? Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Tomorrow evening. Um, and I talked to Kim before she left about the HOHP, the wall that heals, and the donations are to a five-oh-one-C-three. You have to make it to that one, but just go talk to Kim and she'll give it to him. That way they get the credit for it, but it is tax deductible, if that helps anybody. Uh, we did the lion's ribbon cutting, Donna got that, and, uh, the parade really stepped up our game this year. You did a great job, uh, Stevie, your department, but, but, uh, you only made three people mad, but you made like forty thousand real half.
Oh, there you go.
You know, that's the way we, you did, no, you know, we talked about giving you a hard time, but it was, it's phenomenal, all the departments of the city, I mean, the streets were closed, no problem, I saw them setting up, and everything went so smooth, and, uh, you know, especially for having almost essentially the entire population... know, especially for having almost essentially the entire population of Casa Grande on 1st Street for a couple of hours. I mean, couldn't ask for better, so thank you, and the police, everybody was there. It was, it's not just one department, it's the whole city that puts that on, and a lot of volunteers, so thank you.
Thank you, Matt. First of all, again, another welcome, Bob, welcome to the council.
Thank you.
We, we had that shop small downtown on the 24th, which was Saturday. I know I saw Donna downtown, and I was there, and I actually went into some shops that I've never been into, and there are some amazing...
Did you buy anything?
I did.
Okay, good.
There's some amazing shops downtown. The consignment store was amazing. I'm not going to buy, I'm not going to buy new furniture. Again, I'm going to go into the consignment store, because there's some beautiful furniture in there, but if you have never been, never been downtown, don't just wait till shop small Saturday, just go downtown, and it's actually very cool. We talked about it tonight, but the, and thanks for not recognizing my work on the water, by the way.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry.
My feelings are hurt. The water basin study kickoff was this week. We did, we did kickoff, the, it's a three-year study that will, we, we kicked it off with the Bureau of Reclamation, so it was, all the stakeholders were there, it was, it was a great meeting, actually. And then Electric Light Parade, I was in front of City Hall, we lit the tree and had Cindy Schrader and Judge O'Neil were the announcers out front here, and we had a great time. Had to have been 10-deep in front of City Hall, I don't know where, how it was or where else, but it was, it was just crazy.
There's one plastic chair left. You know how they put the chairs out all early? There's still one out by the barber shop.
Waiting for next year.
I think they're waiting next year.
Today, we had, I had, I attended a strategy planning session for the central areas of Arizona governments, which hopefully is a good first step in getting this organization moving the right way. It's our, it's our COG organization that the city belongs to, and it, it helps a lot of our rural community, and is an advocate for rural Pinal and Gila County. Tomorrow, I have a 5:45 call, and I have to be here in the morning to drive up to our public safety personal retirement system program that's tomorrow up in Phoenix, so we'll be taking a look at our retirement systems, and, and everything is going on.
It's a mob up for that.
Going, yeah, I know.
That's not a bad idea.
Can you go?
My wife's shaking her head.
And then this Friday is the Pinal Partnership Breakfast, which they're going to have Elliot Pollak there and presenting the economic development for Pinal County.
Where is it this time?
It's up at Wild Horse Pass.
Okay.
So that's my week. Hope everybody has a, a great week, what's left of it.
Governor?
Pardon me?
Governor? Friday.
Oh, yeah.
One little...
The governor's not coming now, though.
Oh, really?
No, he had, it's, it's...
That was just a campaign promise?
No, it's, it's...
Got stuck in Mexico.
Pastore's funeral.
Oh.
Okay.
So he has a good excuse.
He does.
Are we still getting together?
We, I think we're still getting together, we'll, we'll know tomorrow.
I have more details for the council the next day.
Yeah, we'll, we should know more tomorrow, we're waiting for Lucy to get back to us because of the change, but we'll find out. Hopefully, hopefully we still do it, if not, we can do it another time. So, that being said, then I think that's it for this evening, and...
We have one more meeting.
Oh, well, we're going to adjourn the council meeting.